So I would like to call this interim meeting of the Board of Education to order. It is July 10th at 9:00 a.m. Ms. Tabitha Adams, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Lisa Eastep?
Here.
David Wortman?
Here.
Stephanie Adams? Ms. Adams? Nelson Bollier?
Here.
Judy Justice? Ms. Justice? Jeanette Nichols?
Here.
Bill Ridenberg?
Here.
Stephanie Adams? Chair, I can see Ms. Stephanie Adams here.
All right, let the record show that she is present.
Thank you. Judy Justice?
Okay.
Yay! Ms. Justice? All right, but this time Ms. Justice is absent.
All right, thank you. Item number three, I'm sorry, item number two, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions at this time? Hearing none, I'd like to ask for a motion for approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda, Mr. Bollier.
Check on the motion, Ms. Nichols.
There's a motion to approve in a second.
Lisa Eastep?
Any discussion? Hi.
David Wortman?
Hi.
Stephanie Adams?
Hi.
Nelson Bollier?
Hi.
Judy Justice? Jeanette Nichols?
Hi.
Bill Ridenberg?
Aye.
The motion passes.
All right, motion passes six nothing, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Item number, item number three, old business. Item A, Plan B scenarios, Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Thank you very much for meeting a second time this week. What I would like to do is just briefly recap the information that was shared on Tuesday regarding Plan B scenarios. And there are just a few updates, but not many since last Tuesday. We as a district are required to develop three plans for opening for the 2020-2021 school year. We do not make the decision as to which plan. Plan A, which would bring all students back at the same time with safety and screening and health requirements and protocols necessary, as well as minimal social distancing. Or Plan B, which brings back a limited number of students with the same requirements for Plan A that are also increased and enhanced, limited by 50% of occupancy in a facility, as well as social distancing that is required at all times, including bus transportation. Or Plan C, in which case no students would return and all students would receive instruction remotely. There was a press conference yesterday. Governor Cooper addressed, along with Dr. Mandy Cohen, the status of our state in terms of the virus. And Governor Cooper indicated that he will make a decision, it will be announced next week, as to whether or not we open under Plan A with all, Plan B with limited, or Plan C with no students present. That being said, we are required to develop a plan for each, A, B, and C. Plan C, remote, in which case no students are present. That is how we closed the past school year. We have a plan for that. Because Plan A requirements are included in Plan B, our focus has been on developing scenarios and identifying logistical challenges for Plan B. In doing so, we had three primary work groups, teaching and learning, operations, and health. You've received an update from each of them on Tuesday. And we have continued to meet even since Tuesday to refine our thinking and to move forward with Plan B development. One of the things that has occurred this week, a survey was opened for parents and a separate survey for staff. This is a measure that we are using to gauge interest and comfort. Again, we don't have a choice of who comes back and how many comes back, that'll be up to the governor. But it is important to have some sense of how many families would prefer virtual instruction, remote instruction regardless, to get a sense of staff members' intention and their comfort level regarding return. And this is pretty much a gross measure, it's not a fine measure. The way that the survey is presented, it is anonymous. It is one that can be completed more than once, and so we recognize that. But it is a start, it's a gross measure. Going forward, in the coming weeks, we're going to have to have more granular information. And so individual schools will be surveying their school families for more information and their faculty and staff for more information going forward. The scenarios that are considered are really important. The teaching and learning group spent many, many hours developing a number of scenarios and considering that. They developed a test for discussion and for feasibility. And the test is what's best fit for students, what's best fit for families, what facilitates plan-to-plan transitions and transitions in general. And also, last but not least in any sense, is, is it logistically feasible? Can we actually implement it? And from all of the scenarios, it came to three. Scenario one, and I'll just summarize, is where students would attend school every other week, alternating the weeks. There would be some groups that attend every day. Certain students in special education receiving EC services for whom remote instruction would be a challenge. And English language learners up to year two. And we would allow and focus on having siblings in the same group. Scenario two is the same with the exception that instead of every other week, students would be divided into three groups and would attend school one week out of every three. So one week would be face-to-face instruction. The other two weeks would be instruction that would be handled remotely. And the same groups would come every day as in scenario one. And then finally, scenario three, all pre-K through third grade students and English language learners in year two or less would attend for face-to-face instruction, as well as the exceptional children for whom the challenge would be great to provide remote instruction. Those students would come every day. For students in four through 12, they would be assigned to a group, one, two, or three, and would attend school face-to-face one week out of every three. So one week would be face-to-face, two weeks would be remote learning. The logistical challenges are great. This is a very complicated matter. And in addition to the test that I mentioned, a great consideration is how many variables can we limit initially? Since we really don't know how this will work. The feasibility of any scenario under Plan B is going to be made more complex by the addition of variables. Limiting the variables, limiting the transitions initially especially, is one of the considerations. With all that said, the recommendation is to consider and take action on scenario two under Plan B. That doesn't mean that that's how we'll open school, we don't know that yet. However, if the governor does direct that we open under Plan B, your decision today would be the scenario under which we could work. One of the reasons for the short timeframe between the Tuesday meeting and today, I feel it's important for board members to have the opportunity to consider and think through this. This is a very complicated matter. We do need a decision however, because it is less than a month before year-round students will be in session. And not much more than a month before traditional calendar students will be in session. And so principals, administrators, leaders in all of our buildings have a great deal of work to do. And we have to be able to plan and go forward. So I do appreciate you meeting twice this week. So I will stop at this point and see if there are further questions that we might answer for the board.
Dr. Burns, didn't the, didn't the governor say that we could have 50% occupancy in the schools?
Yes, sir, he said up to 50% maximum occupancy. And there's another part of that. However, we also have to have the social distancing requirement. And that is the limiting factor as we go forward. We, we are going to struggle because of furniture in classes, in classrooms. So yes, sir, it's up to 50% maximum occupancy. However, we also have to have the social distance. Then that is also on bus transportation. We did get some information, there was a change initially. With a 72-passenger bus, we might have been able to transport nine to 12 kids. And now the number is in the low twenties. So transportation is an issue. And the number of routes that are required, given the number of students that would be in the building at the same time, is a logistical challenge. The more students, the more routes we'd have to run. I believe Mr. Anderson addressed that to some degree on Tuesday. If you'd like, we can talk about that a bit more, if that will help.
I'm just worried about parents. I just don't know what some of the parents are going to do and what a lot of the teachers are going to do. They're, you know, teaching remotely and get kids scattered or at school and kids at home. I just don't know what they're going to do.
And how are we working maybe with facilities, organizations for after-school care? These families that, certainly they don't want to risk their child's health, but they need help in getting their children in school as well as after-school care. So what are we doing to address that, those issues?
We have been talking about continuing after-school programs that exist or have existed in New Hanover County schools. And there are other agencies that have provided after-school care. We don't know what their intentions are at this point. Under, under Plan B or C, there are going to be childcare issues, significant childcare issues. Only under Plan A would there be minimized childcare issues. And again, we don't make that choice. No matter what scenario is ultimately the one that the board approves under Plan B, there will be childcare issues regardless. It's only if it's Plan A that is directed by the governor that the childcare issues will be minimized.
Dr. Burns, just to be clear real quick, you keep saying that the governor is the one that makes the decisions for us, but it's my understanding that the governor basically sets the floor. We can actually be more restrictive than the governor, not less restrictive from the governor. So that, so they're not making the decision. So it's not our intent to be more restrictive than whatever the governor says, correct?
At this point, that's correct, sir. And you are correct, districts may be more restrictive, not less restrictive. So for instance, if the governor directed Plan B, New Hanover County schools could move to Plan C. You do have that, yes, sir.
So I guess let's take a couple of the variables out, just so I, I'm understanding. From a fire capacity, from what I think Mr. Ridenberg just asked Mr. Anderson, taking out the furniture issue, which I think is a pretty easy one to address, transportation, I would, it would be the harder issue. But from a fire capacity, disregarding those two factors, is it possible that we could actually have 100% of our students back to schools based on the fire capacity of each individual school?
Fire capacity, yes. Social distancing, likely, no.
Well, but, but possible, correct?
I can't answer that.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson, is, Mr. Anderson, is there anything that you could share that might help with this?
Absolutely, we've, Mr. Wortman, exactly right. There are two tests that, or two restrictions that, that apply, and you have to go with the most restrictive of the two. The fire capacity really isn't an issue for our schools, except where we have posted capacity in some of the assembly areas. We do anticipate, even under the one-third, one-third, you know, scenario B, that we will have to use non-traditional classroom space for classrooms. The social distancing requirement of six-foot separation is, is what is driving how many students we can have in our schools. I have provided some guidance to our principals, and since that went out, I have talked to a number of them. And we're, we are not able to get 50% of our classes back into that same class with, with the six-foot social distancing. So we're, we're, we're struggling right now. Principals are struggling and facilities is trying to help them figure out, you know, how we can get a third of our students back into all of these schools. They're, they are not able to do that utilizing the classroom space that they, they were utilizing last year. In many cases, we will be looking at, you know, some non-traditional spaces, multipurpose rooms, media centers, cafeterias. So I, I think we're, we're, some, just as an example, it is, it is more prevalent in our older schools where we have smaller classroom spaces, six, 600 to 800 square feet. And in those cases where we may have had 30 students in there, we're, we're probably going to be down around 10 to 12. So we're, we're, the principals are really struggling at this point, trying to accommodate a third of their students.
I got you. And I guess that, that kind of leads to my next point, because we obviously did the remote learning for three months this spring. And I, I think that everyone would agree that it, it was not helpful to at least a majority of the students. I know that there were first-grade classes that had 17 or 18 kids in there and had about a 15% participation. So to say that remote learning is an option, unfortunately, I think we've proven that that certainly is, is the least effective option that I think we can sit, could consider. And that's why I think it's important to get the maximum amount of kids back in class. So in the meeting that we had on Tuesday, we talked about these desks that had four kids, and that was one of the major problems that we were having with the social distancing, sitting four people at a desk. I, I think in these situations, if we can get kids back in the classes and look at maybe other, other ways, maybe even to move the desks out, put pillows down, separate them for, I mean, I know just yesterday, one of our board members posted a video of 70 to 80 people dancing inside of one of our gyms that were six feet apart. None of them were wearing masks. So I, I think we're already allowing kids to be inside in our gyms in mass quantities without masks. I don't know why this is an issue. If we're already doing it now, why is it going to be an issue in six weeks? If we take those desks out and put pillows down to allow kids to sit, isn't that more effective than actually just only coming in once every three weeks? And Mr. Anderson, I don't know if it's possible to social distance by, you know, by six feet by allowing the kids to sit on pillows. But to me, if you allow them more classroom experience in front of a class and make sure that they're coming to class, make sure they're also receiving meals as well. To me, that makes so much more sense than a, than a one week on, two week off. Because, you know, you're out of school for two weeks, it's going to take a day or two, as we always talk about after Christmas or after school, to get them re-acclimated, getting back into school. And then you're all the, all the way halfway through the learning period. So have we considered removing the desks and actually spacing kids out by six feet?
We have not considered pillows. We have looked at the furniture that we have available within our schools. And you're correct, it's, it's much more difficult to social distance using tables. You can social distance better using individual desks and chairs. So in, in most cases, as an elementary school, for example, we would, if, again, if a classroom was to accommodate 30 students and we can now put 12 students in that classroom with desks and chairs, we would take those desks that aren't being used and move those to the younger grades, K through two, K through three, and, and store the tables perhaps in the cafeteria. We are looking at doing that with, with our existing furniture, utilizing our desks and chairs to the maximum ability. But we have not considered pillows. I mean, I think that might gain us a little more space, but the individual desks and chairs, we're actually measuring from the person, not the furniture. So I don't think that pillows would make that much of a difference.
And I understand that, but especially with the class size requirements for K through three, we can only have so many kids in those classrooms. And that was one of my, you know, if we're able to maximize that capacity by either using individual desks or using pillows, to me, that makes, makes more sense, and that was just my point. And Dr. Burns, I don't, I don't know, I, I know people are using our schools now. Are we using those as kind of examples of some of the stuff that's going on? Because I know the Freedom School, which is, I'm, I'm all for it. So I, I'm obviously an advocate for trying to get as many people safely in the same room. And I know right now, yesterday, that there are 50, 60, 70 people in the gym that are six feet apart, which are separated. But can we not incorporate that, those, what they're doing, kind of into what we can do to allow more kids into our, into the schools? And I know transportation, this is notwithstanding the transportation issue. So I, I understand, Mr. Anderson, that we do have transportation issues that we would have to figure out. But, you know, doing this, like y'all said, kind of in blocks, looking at the first thing of how many kids we can get in the schools, that, that's what I'm trying to figure out first, and then see if we can get transportation issue resolved.
Right. At the Freedom School, which by the way, Communities in Schools is running that program, we co-sponsor that. They do have use of the, the gymnasium. However, in their classrooms, they have six to eight students. And that's about all that they can get in there and socially distance appropriately.
What's the difference between a gymnasium with seven, with 60 to 70 people standing six feet apart and only allowing six people into a classroom?
Again, it's, it's the space itself, and we can't, there might be able to be more than the six to eight in those classrooms at Gregory. But as Mr. Anderson has shared, within that space, we can't, we have to maintain the social distance. And that really is the limiting factor. In a large space, obviously, you have more room to social distance, because classrooms are limited in, in terms of their, their square footage and their size. That is a limiting factor in that case.
But there are no, just to be clear, there are no social gathering 10 people, 20 people in a space restrictions? So it simply is the six-foot, six-foot circle, or whatever we want to call it?
That, that's correct. The six-foot social distancing requirement truly is a significant limiting factor for us.
I know you said, unless there's a posted fire occupancy.
Right, right.
You know, in the gymnasium, there, there should be a posted fire occupancy. And we could not go over 50% of that, even if we could social distance. So you have to use the most restrictive of the two.
I, I would just like to add some questions. Obviously, we're talking about logistics and we're talking about space and furniture and getting kids back in buildings. And I think, you know, we would all love for the kids to be back in the building. But I would like to just ask the question regarding health for our staff and teachers. You know, I've seen a lot of people that are concerned that if there were to be a positive case in one of our schools, in let's say A or B model, is, is what's decided on. If there is a positive case, whether it's a student, a staff member, teacher, what is the protocol, or have we had those conversations? I know that teachers are concerned about if I get sent home to quarantine. You know, is that sick time? Is it vacation time? Is it unpaid time? Have any of those conversations started? And I'm just curious if you could share any of that?
Yes, there have been a lot of conversations about that. We, we no longer have emergency leave, I'll start there. The only leave we have is the federal COVID leave, which it's not, it helps, but it's not the same as the emergency leave. The question around a positive case in a classroom and/or in the school and the impact, there will be quarantining that will be required. Ms. Varnum, I don't know if you'd like to share some information about some of the discussions that the Health Work Group had, but we are aware that that's going to be a significant challenge for us. Never mind the screening and dealing with someone who becomes sick during the day. When there is a positive case, if there is a positive case, the consequences of that are going to be difficult to deal with. Ms. Varnum, is there anything you'd like to add?
Yes. So we have to make sure that we have the isolation areas too. So that's another critical consideration when we are talking about how many students and staff can we have in the building. So having those one-on-one isolation areas where we're not going to put six students together, we'll keep those isolated. And then really, the challenge is going to be getting in touch with families and families having someone able to come and get the child who's sick. And then, you know, as we work through these scenarios with, with public health and in how we have already kind of practiced contact tracing, if we have followed the physical distancing, if we have followed the guidelines and, and those have been implemented with fidelity, we have less of an issue with having to remove folks from the building and isolate other groups. So the six-foot distancing, and for those who can, wearing the masks, that's when we do have a positive case, that's going to extremely limit, if not completely mitigate, having to then quarantine groups of people. So that's another reason why that's so important.
Thank you. Because I know that's, that's a big concern. You know, we continue to see restaurants in our area get positive cases, and they're shut down for two weeks. How to save the for patrons and save the for staff. And I mean, we have to keep our staff at the forefront of this. I understand that children seem to be at lower risk, and that's wonderful. But we have 4,000 employees at New Hanover County Schools that have families that care about them. And we need to make sure that we're doing what we can to protect that as well with whatever the decision is, where we go. So I appreciate all the work and questions that y'all are asking to, to follow these.
Well, and to add, I just wanted to add one more piece, that when we have had positive cases such as, you know, yesterday, and that was at Gregory, where we do have Freedom School happening, when we, we, we start with those contact trace questions, even before public health gets to those, because they're a little bit backed up, but we can be quicker, because it's our employee and our environment, we're finding that when everybody has practiced the three Ws, when they've given the physical distancing, they're wearing their mask, they're working like they need to be working, we aren't having to remove anybody but the one who is sick. And then like Dr. Burns shared, you know, that the federal, the family's first leave options are there. But I, I think we have to make sure that we are very lenient and, and very helpful in providing those leave options. But just, we haven't had to remove multiple staff.
I'll tell you something that would be interesting, and if we had the time to do it, is to, to give, give all the, the parents a choice. You go virtual learning, or do you want to come to school? And it might work out where all the people that want to come to school could come to school.
And Mr. Ridenberg, that, that's a good point, because I think that when the state did their survey, I think a majority of the parents surveyed, my statistics are probably wrong, but around 40% wanted to go back full-time. I think 30-some percent wanted to go back, kind of like a hybrid model. And I think 30% were actually wanting to do all virtual. So if we assume, and again, that's a big assumption since we haven't had parent survey back yet, which I think is important before we make this decision, I think that if 30% of the parents didn't want to send their children back and wanted to do a full-time virtual, I think that helps us make a decision, you know, in trying to get all of those who want to go back to school, back in school. If we give parents an option, which is important, to do a full-time in school or a full-time virtual, my guess is we have 35% of, of the families that say, we're going to, we choose the virtual option, because a hardship of going to school for one week, and we have parents that are on the board, Stephanie, I know you are, but doing one week and then off two weeks, not only is it an extreme hardship on parents, but it's also not safe for the kids, because instead of making sure they're in one environment, which would be around your classmates, you're now exposing those kids to other environments, whether they be daycares for the other two weeks that they're in. So in, in, it's actually, could potentially actually be less safe than actually sending kids back to full-time. I mean, if you look at the CDC guidelines, if you look at the I mean, if you look at the CDC guidelines, if you look at the American Academy of Pediatrics, they're all recommending getting the kids back into school. We all know there's risk. I don't think anyone discounts that, that this is an extremely serious situation and it's a tough decision. But I think if we were to give parents the choice of full-time, virtual, or full-time in school, you know, if we have thirty percent that choose not to go back to full time, I think we can figure out a way to choose, send those seventy percent of kids back into the schools.
I, I agree, I agree.
I feel that the one thing that's missing in that American Pediatric Association article is that it's about the kids, but we have staff that we have to consider. And, and I just, I agree, I think the parents should have, as a working parent myself, I understand the struggles, this is, it's awful. But I think that we've got to make sure that we're erring on the side of caution. You know, I feel like our educators are just expected to do everything for everyone at all times. And here they are in the middle of a public health crisis, again, being told, hey, teachers, we're going to put you at risk because our kids need to get back in the buildings. And I agree, virtual education is not, is, is tough. And I'm not saying any one of these scenarios, because the decision hasn't been made by the governor yet, so all of this is hypothetical until we really know the direction that we're going. All I'm saying is, we can't leave the staff out of these conversations. Their thoughts and feelings and fears matter. And I just want to make sure we're keeping that at the front of this as we talk about getting our kids back in the buildings.
But Stephanie, don't, don't you think that, and I understand that. But if you have a controlled group coming in every day, instead of other kids that are going to daycare for two weeks and then coming back, I think the safety is actually better if you keep, keep that controlled group together. Now, I understand they leave school and go home for the afternoon. But instead of being exposed to different groups of, of students, that, that's all I'm saying, I totally understand about the safety of it. But I think that minimizes maybe the, I don't know how to say it, but minimizes how the other contacts kids could come up with, which in turn would minimize the, the risk to, to actually some of the educators and staff. That, that's my point. But no, I understand, I do understand where you're coming up. And then, you know, what, do every, every, every hour have hand washing stations? Something like that. Teach the kids how to, how to be safer. What I, I, if, if I were to do, if, if we were to do something like this, instead of only saying people eleven-year-old and greater wear masks, it would be my hope that we would require all students to wear masks. I think that would make sense and it'd be another way that we could certainly, certainly make sure that, that we're maximizing our safety efforts. So that, those are my thoughts. I think if we can get the kids back, I'm confident that we come up with a safe, with a safe plan to make sure everyone's safe. And that includes educating students, educating parents, and educating our staff. But that, that's, that's all I'm saying.
And Dr. Burns, with Plan B, we're going to need additional staff. Or do we have those people that are going, if, if you have a classroom teacher and someone has to be working virtually, how are we going to accommodate all these scenarios?
Ms. Nichols, we're going to have to look at things very differently. And it is not the case with a limited number of students face-to-face and the remainder being instructed remotely, that one teacher can do all of that at the same time, obviously. Schools are going to have to consider how they'll utilize the staff they have. It may be, for an example, that one teacher or two teachers, depending on the number of students, the grade level, the course, whatever it might be, provide face-to-face instruction every day. And then other teachers provide the remote instructions to the students. In that case, a student might have two teachers as a third grade student. Or the, the student may have two teachers or three teachers, depending on the number of kids in a biology class, one for face-to-face and two for remote. The, the, the idea that if we cannot bring all students back under Plan B, and that's what Plan B is, we can't bring them all back. We can't take the way instruction occurred in February and drop that in in August. It, it won't work. That's one of the great challenges here. And so in terms of the staffing, no ma'am, I don't see that we have, they're not additional staff members that we can bring in, there'll be a great cost there. We're going to have to utilize to the best of our ability the staff that is present. The other question is, will we have sufficient staff members in the building to provide the face-to-face instruction? We are surveying the staff, and again, this is a gross measure. It won't be, it won't really give us the information we need until it gets to the building level and folks know, is it Plan A, B, or C? And in some cases, staff members may feel uncomfortable coming back regardless. We have some information about that from the, the current survey. But the staffing question is one of the greatest unknowns. If we can get all the students there, that would be fine. The question is, will we have sufficient staff? And we, we won't know that for a bit longer. That's one of the real challenges here and one of the reasons for trying to limit the number of variables. And as you can imagine, if the requirements remain the same, and I don't expect them to change, for the social distancing and the screening and, and the other aspects related to health, the greater the number of students, the more challenging and difficult that's going to be. Consider, for example, a high school. Every student, everybody who comes into that building is going to have to be screened every day. That's going to take quite a great deal of planning and organization and time. But again, there are lots of variables, the staffing variable is, is one. We, we just don't have the information and we really won't have good information for a while.
Dr. Burns. Go ahead, Nelson.
Dr. Burns, I was just, I, I, I agree with, with David and Jeanette about, you know, how important it is to get kids back in as soon as possible, as many as possible, as safely as possible. I guess I look at the scenario too as sort of a start. I, I don't look at, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, is the intent here to give us a platform from which we can start and from which we can build and then look at how it's going after a few weeks, reassess and see where we are, see if we can amp up, see if we can do more, see if we have to do less. I, I look at it as comparing to those numerous variables that you mentioned. Is that correct?
That is correct. We have to have a plan and assuming Plan B is the direction that we're given, we need a starting point. And we need a starting point in order for the, the planning to occur. Again, the logistical challenges are the ones that I'm most concerned about. I'm becoming more and more concerned that we're not going to have enough time, we'll do the best we can. But it, it would be the correct thing to do after a period of time to assess, you'll have better information then. Until actually school starts, I don't think you're going to have complete information. After a period of time, you'll have much better information. How many students are requesting and engaged in virtual learning by choice? How is it working with the transportation, with the screening, with the social distancing in the building? Once you have that information, then absolutely you should come back to this, you know, assess it and continue to monitor it and make adjustments. The goal is to get students back in school. The question is, how do we start if, and again, I have to keep going back to, if Plan B is the choice? If that's, if that's what the governor chooses. If it's Plan A, well, there it is, everybody's back. If it's Plan A, as was shared earlier, the board could decide to be more restrictive. You could choose whatever Plan B is in place or Plan C. But I, I do believe the idea that this is a starting point. We have to have some point to begin the work, the planning. There's a great deal of work that has gone on, but until we know the scenario, how to handle those logistics for transportation and at the building level. And that's my concern is, it's not at the central level, it's at the building level. They are going to need, they've got a lot of work to do. And they need to have that starting point.
Dr. Burns, thank you. Dr. Burns, I, I wanted to briefly discuss Scenario Three, which I think is along the lines of the control group that Mr. Wardman was referring to. Because the pre-K through third grade would be attending every day. Can you, can you briefly discuss why that was discussed and then ultimately not chosen?
Yes. The K three class size is a helpful factor. But I'm not sure at this point we, we can say with confidence that we could put all of a class K one, two, three into the same classroom space. The, if there has to be any division of classes, there'll be a staffing issue there. The, the transportation issue with, with families could be quite the challenge for us. And the number of transitions would be less, of course, for K three. It would be the same for four twelve as in Scenario Two. It's the logistical questions that we can't answer at this point in terms of feasibility.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Burns, when we, when will we find out which families opted for virtual versus the ones that wanted to go to, in, in school?
Yes, sir. That, that's going to come very soon. We're working on a survey that would be used by all schools to determine that. And the schools will administer that. We're meeting with principals weekly and we'll be meeting more often. And so in the next few weeks, we should have that information.
Okay, thank you.
I, I appreciate, Nelson, I appreciate your, your point about adopting as we do. I, I feel that though, now that we have the time to spend the time at looking at a plan, we should try to maximize the students, the maximum amount of students we have in class now that we don't have students in class, we're not having to actual deal with transportation issues with kids actually being in schools. So look at, get the maximum amount of kids that we can in school. And if we need to adapt or pull it back, it's a lot easier to pull back than it is to push forward, especially when we're evaluating all that, all of those issues that we're talking about. So my, my, I, I just don't know why we're actually, and I understand, Dr. Burns, that you say that we need to have some direction. But when we haven't even completed the survey, when we actually have a survey that shows about sixty-five percent would go back, want to go back, can we not come up with a plan that actually shows sixty-five percent or seventy percent of our kids in the schools? Kind of anticipating thirty percent aren't coming back? And if we come up with that plan and the, we can poll the, the parents and see if we actually can move forward with that sort of plan?
We can certainly consider that. The social distancing question is the greatest one. Mr. Anderson, I know that you've done some modeling. Is there anything that you can share regarding a number greater than fifty percent of the students, not the occupancy, coming back, say sixty or seventy percent of the students returning?
Yes, we've, we've been, we've been actually focused on the option of a third in, and recognizing a couple of things, even with a third of the students coming back, there are, there are a population of ESL students and EC students that would be there full time. And that, that takes away from your available space. There's also the need for isolation spaces and flexibility if you have a, a positive case. Where we are, I'm working with principals now, I've heard from several that are, that are looking at this and modeling that scenario in their schools. And in, in certain cases, we're not able to fit a third of the population in the building utilizing the classrooms that they have. So even with a third, they're already having to consider non-traditional classroom space. We've talked about, I know you've talked about K three class size and, but keep in mind that we're in the third of a four-year plan to reduce K three class size. And for the upcoming 2021 school year, grades, kindergarten are still at nineteen students. It's still a pretty significant number. Grades one, two, and three are at seventeen. And we're even, even at the, with the larger classroom space of approximately fifteen or two, we're not able to accommodate those numbers. We're, we're probably down around twelve to thirteen at a max. Maybe as many as fifteen in our largest classrooms, square footage.
If you're talking about, Mr. Anderson, if you're talking about twelve or thirteen students in a eighteen and nineteen person classroom, that's sixty-seven percent, not thirty-three percent.
Well, no, the, the thirty-three percent that I'm talking about refers to the full student population. You know, when, when you, when you consider the full student population.
Gotcha.
And up into individual classes.
So if you can do twelve or thirteen, let's say thirteen kids a classroom, that kind of gives you a baseline of how many kids you actually can put in the actual classroom space in a school, correct?
And it varies. It, you know, if you're, it's going to vary drastically depending on the size of the space, the shape of the space, and the furniture that's in there. You may have a classroom that you're only able to fit eight or nine, make of a classroom space that you could fit twelve. It, it's going to vary space to space and school to school. The, the other issue that we, that we're having, as you know, we've got a population bubble in our middle schools that's moving into the eighth grade. And so they're, they're struggling to fit a third of the students in their space as well. You know, when with the, you know, under Scenario Three where we looked at pre-K through three, we, we actually looked at, you know, how, how many students could we, could we fit in? We couldn't utilize our schools because there's not any space. We cannot utilize our high schools because a third is about even with the population. But there's, there's a real significant scheduling issue with high schools. And you, you didn't have the space in the elementary schools. The, the reason that at least the operations group was looking at Scenario Two is because we, we know it's challenging, it's, it's not, it's not easy. We know it's going to be a challenge to accommodate a third of the students. But we felt like that it, it, at least we could start with that. And if we found after, after some time in evaluating, and Mr. Wardman, like you said, we, we don't know how many students are going to choose a virtual option or some other option. But at least then we could adjust and maybe bring a grade level in full-time or bring the third in, switch to, you know, a fifty-fifty model in, in every other week. But, you know, it was important with all the unknowns and variables to have some flexibility within whatever plan or whatever scenario we chose for Plan B.
Dr. Burns, one question that was posed to me from a bus driver was their responsibility. And of course, some of them aren't comfortable even in driving and being exposed to the students. But those students that are to wear masks, if they come to the stop and they don't have a mask, are we providing them?
We have thirty thousand, roughly thirty thousand masks in the warehouse. We will have them available, yes.
And bus drivers, bus drivers won't do any kind of testing, though.
There will have, there will, Ms. Nichols, there has to be screening before students get on the bus.
Okay.
And that's, that's one of the concerns, again, with the greater number of students that we have. Bus drivers, there has to be screening before you get on the bus, there has to be screening before you come into a building. So the concern from the staff level is great. We don't know at this point exactly how many drivers we'll have. There, there are a lot of questions and please note, my interest is to get as many students in as we can. However, we've got to be able to feasibly, logistically do that. The bus driver question about masks, about screening is an important one. Because the more students that we have on a bus, of course, even now we're up to, I think it's twenty-two. because the more students that we have on a bus, of course, even now we're up to, I think it's twenty-two or twenty-four. Mr. Henderson, you can correct me if you need to. That helps us get students to school. However, that increases the effort with screening and we're going to have to factor that into our rallying. And so trying trying to put all of that together has been the struggle. And I I do appreciate that we we need to get students back in school. I agree with that very very strongly. My greatest confidence among all the scenarios is in our ability to implement scenario two. I have less confidence in scenario one and even less confidence in scenario three because of the number of unknowns. And it's not, again, that we're trying to limit the number. We're trying to get as many as we can in there and be able to do it. That's that's been my concern all along is trying to determine, given the lack of information and the unknowns, the questions that are going to be out there and the effort that it's going to take at each building level to implement the greatest confidence, and it's still going to be a daunting challenge to implement scenario two, but that's the one I have the greatest confidence in.
Dr. Burns, you're you're mentioning the screening option. Has there been any discussion with public health that they will be able to provide additional nurses on staff to assist with that? Has there been any partnership discussion along those lines?
We have had discussion about that. I do not believe that option is one that is on the table. Ms. Vornum, can you share anything about the discussions?
Yes, there aren't funds for additional nurses. In in fact, there was a request from public health to have an additional nurse supervisor just to support the discussions and the and the school nurses that'll be in the building. But there there aren't options for that at this time with public health or county funding, or honestly with ours as well. But we have been talking about the guidance from the 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 toolkit from public health really talks about maximizing the role of the nurse, but also maximizing the delegation of the school nurse. And under state board policy, the nurses can delegate to other staff members with training under the nurse's licensure, not to do anything medically invasive, but for screening and that kind of thing. So we're working with within those parameters with public health right now.
Thank you.
What happens if a bus driver takes a kid's temperature at six o'clock in the morning and he's got a temperature?
Mr. Ivanbark, that is one of the big questions. And I have talked with many superintendents. None of us have a great response to that. Obviously, we can't leave a child unsupervised, especially an elementary student. And if we can't allow them to get on the bus, frankly, at this point, there are some options, but none of them are very good.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Burns, two quick questions. First, does it have to be an employee of New Hanover County Schools who who screens our students? We have parent volunteers in the school all the time. Could we have a parent volunteer screen our students instead of a bus driver?
I would suppose under some circumstances that might be acceptable. I don't know about any legal aspects of that because they are placing themselves in a position of of screening and coming in contact potentially with someone who has a fever, who actually is has the virus. So I'm sure we could use volunteers under certain circumstances, but I suspect there would have to be some training. There'd have to be some information that have to be provided beyond that, probably a waiver of some sort. I don't know how involved it might be, but I don't think it'd be as simple as asking folks to volunteer for a field day.
Okay, and when our teachers in middle school and high school are lecturing or elementary school, I suppose, will they need to wear a mask while they're actually providing instruction?
It's going to depend on the mask requirement. There is a requirement now that we wear masks, secondary, middle, and high school. It was indicated yesterday that there'll be additional mask requirement guidance provided next week. I don't know what that means at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Burns, and really, I guess, Ms. Vornum as well, what about for those students and possibly staff for whom a mask would be burdensome or impossible? I'm speaking especially for maybe some of our EC students or even ESL students where you really need to see the face or it's it's just problematic. Is there any option to wearing like a face shield?
Yes, there there are exemptions to the requirement for wearing a mask that have been shared already. There's been discussion about clear face masks. There's been discussion about shields. That would be another variable, another logistic that we'd have to address.
So do we have all the necessary equipment to start our year-round schools? For masks?
We have masks, we have thermometers. There are some other things, there are some breath guards, the Plexiglas devices that need to be in place. And I don't know if we have all of those in stock yet. I do know they have been ordered. The the equipment to sanitize beyond the regular enhanced cleaning we've been doing all since March, they have been ordered. I do not know if they are present yet either.
Dr. Burns, they have been received as well as the the state also sent us two hundred and we're going to purchase some more of the clear face shields.
Thank you.
So year year round is going back just like they were?
August fourth, yes, sir, that's the calendar.
So how so how are we getting all the year-round students in the same school?
Well, the governor's going to make his announcement next week, so we'll know A, B, or C. And that's one of the reasons that it is so important to know if it is Plan B, under which scenario, so that we can have that work done so the students can attend school on August fourth. That's that's really a pressing matter.
When do you anticipate that the individual schools will have their surveys completed and knowing what the parents are are requesting?
The surveys are being developed now with input from principals. We're having a principal meeting on Wednesday to begin to lay out for them the things that they can do to give them support and guidance. I would expect that the surveys will be out in the next two weeks. I don't know if they'll be back, I would hope so by then. It it's the the time factor is is that's pressing us very strongly at the moment. So I would hope within the next two weeks.
Yeah, time is critical.
I I think I
Not knowing what the governor is going to do or say certainly makes it a challenge.
On practicality, he's obviously waiting to see what the health officials are saying because things are not stabilizing the way we hope. And by the way, hello, everybody, sorry about the technical issues on my end.
Good seeing you, I was worried about you because of you mentioned about your children, so.
They're in a separate house, they're staying away from you.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you for asking, Jeanette.
Did they get the results back?
Oh, we're still waiting, that's why they're isolating themselves until you don't know, you don't know.
No.
Well, if there are no, if there's no further discussion, I would ask for, you've got the recommendation, I would ask for a motion to accept a scenario two as recommended by Dr. Burns. If scenario B is the, excuse me, scenario two for Plan B.
Accept scenario two under option B.
Second, Stephanie Adams.
Oh, Mr. Bowyer.
Mr. Bowyer was the, made the motion and Ms. Adams made the second. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I would like to make the substitute motion. I would ask that the motion be that the administration develop a plan whereas we could get seventy percent of the kids back into school instead of just one-third of the kids back into school, looking at transportation issues, looking at ways to utilize the space.
Ms. Dagnor, do we need to vote on the current motion on the table first?
There's been, if if there is a second to Mr. Work Workman's motion, then that would be a vote on whether to to amend or substitute the motion.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Ms. Dagnor.
Well, and and then depending on the outcome of that, you would either go back original motion or vote on the sub on the substitute motion.
I can go with either one of them, but if the if the survey comes back and a a good part of the people are choosing virtual, then I want to figure out how to get all the kids back in school that do want to be in school.
Well, until there's a second on Mr. Workman's motion to substitute, then the the board doesn't know which direction to go in.
I'll second it, I'll second it so we can get going.
All right, so there's a there's a motion and a second on the substitute motion. And then, Ms. Dagnor, we would go ahead and and decide on that one first?
Decide whether to, yeah, there would be a vote, first a vote on whether to substitute the motion and then a vote on the substance of the substitute motion or go back to the original one depending on.
And discussion, Miss E Step, discussion on that substitute motion. I I would say the reason for that that substitute motion is to give parents actually a choice of either going to virtual full-time or going to virtual or going to school full-time. I I think we need to give our parents and students and teachers a choice because the teachers obviously are going to have choices too, but that would be the intent of this substitute motion.
This is a discussion. This is a discussion. I did have my phone, I was listening. Unfortunately, my computer technically couldn't see anything. I was hearing what everyone was saying. I want to stay with the professionals that have been studying this and looking at the buildings. We won't know for a couple of weeks, we've got to have something in place. And we don't even know next week whether it would be A, B, or C anyhow. So that just throws more confusion, in my opinion, that's my opinion, into these and into these different scenarios that we have in front of us.
And I actually am basing it on the professionals, looking at the national data of the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics. So there's a little different data out there, so to say that one is incorrect and one is 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 correct, I I think would be inaccurate. But I I have looked at a lot of that, that's why I'm making that specific motion.
Dr. Burns, I I just want to be clear, you believe that this plan maximizes what we can do. This isn't a plan to limit students. Your intention here was to get as many students into the building as possible, is that correct?
That is correct, and this is the scenario under which I have greatest confidence. And I will speak for the work groups, that they have the greatest confidence that even though it's going to be incredibly challenging, and it will, it will be quite the challenge logistically, even at this level, it's going to be very difficult to meet all of the requirements that are in Plan B, even under scenario two. That that is why it is a recommendation. I I would say that I I cannot comment on the feasibility of seventy percent of the students coming into the building. Can only imagine the difficulties and that would not be my recommendation, I need to be clear about that. To start at some place and then assess and move forward based on what happens, I think is the conservative approach in this case with the idea that you want all students back in buildings as soon as they can be in the building safely and we can meet the requirements. The one of the the struggles is that there is a lot of good research that's available and there are a lot of professional opinions as well as facts that are shared. In North Carolina, we have certain limiting factors that are out of our control that come from the Department of Health and Human Services. And we have to meet those requirements and and that's one of the great limitations for us.
Mr. Workman's a hundred percent correct about the American Academy of Pediatrics. It's possible, the governor's looking at that, it's possible he could say, let's go with option A. And you would be, you would be prepared for that eventuality?
Yes, if it's option A, then we will certainly do it. Option A has minimal social distancing, all students are in school, we we can certainly address that.
Wouldn't it be nice to just flush this meeting down the toilet and have option A and all the kids are back in school and everything's good? I think all of us want that, I'm I'm sure of that. I don't know how practical that is.
Health-wise, it's all about the health. And that's what we did by, I mean, let's be honest, by opening up our our, you know, to, I guess, whatever, the number two part was when we started letting businesses open, things like that, that's why we've got such a huge increase. So we might have
Judy, that's a scare tactic and and
Let me finish what I'm saying, David, I listen to you, please listen to me.
Look at the facts, that's
Will you please let me finish, David? Okay, so we did that and now it looks like we might have to pull back, which is going to be extremely hard. I'm just comparing that to the schools. If we did that prematurely and then had to pull back, and I think we mentioned that during the last meeting, it's a lot harder to do that than to start from where we are and then let up. That's all I was trying to say, David, I wasn't trying to, I'm not an expert.
I understand, I just don't want to get into the political this and
It's not political, I'm talking about practicality, that's why
We're five and a half, we're five and a half weeks from opening up school. We're making a decision that I think that I understand it's time sensitive, but at the same point, we haven't even listened to the parents yet. We have, we've we've all heard from a couple of parents, but we have a survey out that we don't have any idea what the survey is going to say. We do have a state survey that shows about thirty percent wish to keep their kids out of school full-time and do virtual school. That's why I came up with that seventy percent figure. And I assume that the other thirty percent that said half virtual and half half school, I would imagine a percentage of them will also choose full-time virtual. So it may actually be less than seventy percent. But I am trying to come up with a plan that that maximizes maximizes our kids back. And I don't think that one-third of the kids in school comes anywhere close to maximizing it. Because if you look at what private schools are doing right now, I know they're different, I understand, but private schools are going two days a week for some kids, three days a week for the other, and then the next week, two days a week, three days a week. So they're going to school a lot more than than our kids are going to school right now. And again, that, I I just think that we can get more kids than one-third every, one-third every three weeks into our school. I I think we can do better than that, and that's the only reason why I'm why I'm pushing this.
This is really hard and this is really sad, but it's, we're talking about the health. It's not just the kids, the people that work with the kids, I'm just as worried about them as the kids. And so, you know, this this is something that I'm going to, to me, I think the health officials seem pretty clear, straightforward that we need to put as many safeguards in place as possible.
Oh, I would agree with that, Judy, I I agree with the safeguards. I just think that there's ways that we can do it and still increase the number of kids in our school. And we we all agree with this health and safety for, as Stephanie said, staff, kids, I mean, that that's the goal of this this discussion. So it's, I I I hope I'm not making it contentious, I'm just trying to make it that that we do maximize not only the safety of of our staff and kids, but we also educate our kids, which I think is an issue.
I think we have, we have to make it clear that this is our first recommendation, but we value the survey results and that we are willing to explore other options and and opportunities to get all the children back in school.
And and Jeanette, you know that it's when you make a decision and then you move forward with a decision, it's infinitely harder to change that decision and it takes time. So my worry is is that we make a decision, we then evaluate in two or three months and we could have had more than a third of the kids back in school, maybe up to fifty percent or even seventy percent back in school. And those kids that have not been in school have lost another three months on top of the three months of learning they've lost in the last spring. That's why I want to maximize the amount we can get in, and if we need to cut it back, we cut it back.
Well, that's, yeah, but aren't we, are we not doing that now with the plan?
With a third of the kids, I don't think we're, I don't think we're going to cut. I would hope we don't cut less than, when we only have a third of the kids going back to school, I can't imagine a scenario where we bring even less kids. I I think we shut down at that point.
But I think everyone's forgetting that we're 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 not looking at the the special ed kids and the ESL kids that we're allowing in the schools. And then we're 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 disregarding And then we're, 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 we're disregarding all of those children. And so we are educating some children, that's the control group, every single day. So some of our, our, our most high need students are going to be in the building every single day.
Right.
So when we're saying, when we're, when we're saying that we're, we're, you know, we're not, we, we are.
Well, we're supposed to be looking out for all kids, first of all. Second of all, I would say, and Ms. Dagnall, this will be a question for you. We do have some kids that are coming back full-time, that we would be coming back full-time. What if a parent came up to you that may be not in one of those groups and said, I want my kid to have full-time schooling? Because they need it. Because if they don't, they will fall behind. From a legal standpoint, how do we address that?
The hybrid plan under Plan B is full-time instruction. It's just that some of the children are in the classroom face-to-face sometime and receiving virtual instruction the remainder of the time. So there is no student under Plan B who is not getting the full instruction. And so I, I, I understand that everyone, educators, board members, parents prefer and, and recognize the, that full-time face-to-face instruction is the ideal, is, is the goal. But I would say from a legal point of view, that the, the response is that the, the child is receiving full-time instruction.
I would also like to push back. I, I would like to make a comment to something David said a couple of minutes ago. And it was that we don't want to make a decision and then not, and then get stuck in it because circumstances change. I think that we've proven as a district, after the world shutting down in March and being able to pivot quickly as a district and as a country, that I think that we could do the same thing if conditions change within our district. We have very smart people that are guiding these decisions. They are doing their research. They are looking at all the factors. We have passionate educators that want to implement and be able to provide the, the best cases for all of our students. And so if conditions change, I do believe that we could shift, pivot, change and do what's best. We all want as many kids back in school as possible. That, that is, that is the definite across the board. But we have to do it safely. And I, and I do think that if it's changed, we would be able to change with it.
And how are we going to ensure that all of our children who are receiving virtual instruction are really receiving it?
It's going to be a lot, it's, it's going to be a lot easier with the three, the two week on and two weeks off with the teachers interacting and already having, having had the experience in the spring to actually bring the kids into virtual learning in, in a more, because they, I mean, they just walked out and never came back again, you know? Now we're going to have contact and ability. And you know this, Jeanette, is that we now will be able to develop teaching plans around this particular scenario. They'll be a lot more effective than what happened in the spring using virtual learning. I mean, that, as a teacher, that's why I look at it in that direction.
We have accountability for a lot of people. Parents, students and family, our employees.
I, I believe our teachers are up to it and our students and families.
So if, if there's no more, yeah, if there's no more discussion, I would like to call the question and have a vote on the substitute motion. So Ms. Adams, Ms. Tabitha Adams, would you?
Lisa Eastep?
No.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
No.
Nelson Bowyer?
No.
Judy Justice?
No.
Jeanette Nichols?
No.
Bill Rivenberg?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
All right, so the motion failed five to two. Five to two?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you. So now we go back to the original motion. Is that correct, Ms. Dagnall?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so the original motion is on the table. It was, the motion was made by Mr. Bowyer and seconded by Ms. Adams. And Ms. Tabitha Adams, would you please take the roll call?
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bowyer?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg?
No.
The motion carried five to two.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. All right, we are on item B, virtual school, excuse me, application. Uh, Ms., Dr. Smith? Thank you, Dr. Burns.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chairperson, board members, Dr. Burns. As a part of the district's work and to, to meet the needs of our, our families, the district is proposing and seeking the board's direction to make application for a K-12 virtual public school. We believe that a K-12 virtual school option provides for families choosing online learning as a long-term option, greater collaboration, consistency and continuity. Additionally, it allows the district to employ a principal who would be a specialist in this area of online learning and has the knowledge, skills and experience to lead a school that has no walls and serves students across the district in a K-12 online environment. The virtual school will have a singular focus while our school-based online academies that would be made available if the governor selects option B for the district to open will be included as a part of the regular school, school program, which includes face-to-face and remote learning. Additionally, in order to, to make application, the, the following information is necessary. We would need a school name, an opening effective date, physical address, grade levels, possibly pre-K through grade 13, type of school, whether it be virtual, full, face or supplemental. These are the things that we would have to respond to, estimated first year of ADM and then list of current schools where population will, will come from. And again, what we are seeking from the district is just the direction of the board to make application.
This is the beginning step. Is that?
Yes.
Dr. Smith, would people who attend the, the virtual school have access to extracurricular activities, sports? What would that look like?
So there are still quite a few unknowns. With this, I can speak specifically to what we offer with our virtual academy that is associated with Mosley. We do make athletics available to those students. But again, the, the motivation for this is coming directly from our current situation with, with COVID-19. So if there is the opportunity to make sports available and it is the, the desire and direction of the board, then we, then we surely would.
So at this time, we're just going to, we're just looking to complete the application. Are you looking for a name or are we just looking for a name as a placeholder?
Madam Chair, Dr. Smith, if I could comment on that, that, that is one of the primary reasons this would need to come back to the board. The board would have to approve the name and the application before submission. So th- this morning, we're asking for you to give us the direction to go forward to complete the application, bring it to the board for review and determination of, about the name. And then with your approval of the application as prepared, it would be submitted at that point to the Department of Public Instruction.
Okay, so you'll have all of the, the other information, the physical address, where you think you would attach it and, and all of that?
Yes.
When, when do you anticipate presenting it to the board for approval?
I would anticipate at the next regular meeting.
Well, in that case, I would like to make a motion to instruct the administration to conduct a virtual application or to complete the virtual application.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Well.
All right, Ms. Nichols is the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Tabitha Adams, take it away.
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bowyer?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Smith.
Thank you.
All right, we have quite a few announcements here. The New Hanover County Board of Education will hold an intro meeting on Friday, July 10th at 9:00 a.m. in the Board of Ed Center. That was today. Policy committee meeting on Tuesday, July 14th at 9:00 a.m. in the Board of Ed Center. The New Hanover County Board of Education will hold a special meeting on Friday, July 17th at 10:45 a.m. in the Board of Ed Center. The only item on the agenda is a closed session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to North Carolina general statutes 143-31811A1, A6 and 115C-319. The New Hanover County Board of Education will hold a special meeting on Saturday, July 18th at 10:45 in the Board of Ed Center. The only item on the agenda is a closed session to discuss personnel matters pursuant to North Carolina general statutes 143-31811A1, A6 and 115C-319. The Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee will hold a meeting on Monday, July 6th and Monday, July 20th at 5:00 p.m. in the Board of Ed Center. Attendance will be strictly limited to more than, to no more than 10 people, which is recommended by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. The general public will have the option to review, to view remotely via live streaming on Roku, Apple TV and online at NHCS TV. Is there anything else any other board member would like to add?
Well, we've got another meeting on the 21st that we, listen, superintendent, or do we get scratch seven?
We don't have one planned at this time.
Okay.
But we may, we certainly have the option to add, add one. So we will announce that when we do.
Okay, the, the meetings on the 17th and 18th start at 10:45. Do you have any idea of what kind of timeframe we're talking about there?
We were given a, an agenda with those times from, from State School Board.
The NCSB, NCSBA. I don't have that in front of me.
We're not going into late at night or anything like that, are we?
I would imagine Saturday would be a pretty long one.
Yes.
Well, I won't be able to stay for all of them.
Saturday is from, ends at 6:30. Or soon after.
Okay.
Both days. Start at 10:45 and 6:30 and probably the Saturday one take a little longer.
All right, if there is nothing else, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move for adjourn, Mr. Bowyer.
Second, Ms. Nichols.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Tabitha Adams?
Lisa Eastep?
Aye.
David Wortman?
Aye.
Stephanie Adams?
Aye.
Nelson Bowyer?
Aye.
Judy Justice?
Aye.
Jeanette Nichols?
Aye.
Bill Rivenberg?
Aye.
Motion passes seven, nothing. Thank you, everyone, for the great discussion.